Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Gresham Borough Council's Planning and Business Development Cabinet Committee, the first one of this newly renamed and reformed Cabinet Committee. As usual, I intend to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and recorded, and the meeting will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by anyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking. Ensure you turn your microphone off once you've finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note the visual equipment of the council may on some occasion focus on or near the public gallery. Therefore, those in attendance at the meeting may be filmed and recorded, and attendance at your meeting signifies your agreement to this. If, as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform the council member of staff in attendance, and we'll try to assist where reasonable possible. And of course, on hearing the fire alarm, we'll ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits, which my stewarding is over there. And this way, please, they head that way. And we meet on the way, Community Square, outside the main reception doors. With the livestream announcement done, I'll ask the clerk for apologies, Mabson, please.
Thank you, Chair. We've received an apology from councillor Baines.
Thank you very much. Item three then is minutes of the Strategic Environment Cabinet Committee on Wednesday, the 26th of March. Can I take the committee's correct record, please? Agreed? Good. Thank you very much. I shall sign those. Item four, any declarations of interest of anything that is on the agenda? Councillor Hawkins, please.
Just to say, I've got a current building control application, and I have a property with a tree preservation order on it.
Thank you very much. I believe you also live in the conservation area as well.
I do.
There we go. So for the records for all of that duly noted, are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you very much. Item five is to consider when any items in part A of the agenda should be considered in private or items in part B in public. I don't propose we move any around, keep it all in part A, if that's okay. Thank you very much. We then move on to the first item substantive item of the agenda, item six, tree preservation orders and trees in conservation areas, which will be a presentation on our screen. Mr. O'Neil, please.
Thank you, Chair, and everyone should hopefully be able to see the presentation. This presentation is intended to provide members with an overview in relation to tree preservation orders, as well as trees in conservation areas. Tree preservation orders are commonly known as TPOs. The intention is for this presentation and member input to form the basis of a guidance document which will produce for the boroughs, residents and businesses in due course. What is a tree preservation order? A TPO is an order produced and adopted by the local authority to protect a tree or trees from works and harmful damage so that they can be enjoyed by the public and to not negatively impact the local environment. TPOs are placed on trees considered to significantly contribute to the local amenity of an area. What do we mean by amenity? Immunity is not defined in law and is a matter of judgment that takes into consideration various factors. This can include the species, size, age and form of the tree, as well as its contribution to the local landscape and local conservation area. Making a TPO. The making of a TPO is a discretionary power, but when a TPO is made by a local authority, we are duly obliged to enforce it. A TPO can only be made if no objections are received within the first six months of the process. After this period, if no objections are received, a TPO can be made permanent. This then requires anyone undertaking works in most instances to obtain approval from the council before legally carrying out any works to the tree. This diagram highlights the process at a high level. A key aspect to note is that the order has to be informed by evidence, i.e. an inspection of the tree or trees. It cannot be made summarily, so there is a process that one has to follow when making a tree preservation order. How do members of the public get permission for undertaking works to a tree covered by tree preservation order? To apply for permission to undertake works to a protected tree or trees, applicants can make applications online or via any other route which is available to them, notably in writing or via email. There is no fee for submitting such applications to the council, although costs will be incurred in preparing an application, for example, the production of a agricultural report by an arboriculturist in relation to the tree and its condition, et cetera. In terms of what happens if you carry out permission on a tree without having the relevant approval, unauthorized works to a tree protected by a TPO can result in fines being imposed. These fines are imposed by the magistrate's court, subject to severity of the incident, and if the case goes to the Crown Court, the fines can be greater and unlimited. It's also up to the court to issue an order for a replacement tree or trees if they view that to be something that's required, and such orders are also made by the court. There are some exemptions for carrying out works to trees covered by a TPO, and they are allowed for in legislation. However, the council should be informed and only the necessary urgent works undertaken. Any further works that are required or are desired should only be taken after an application has been submitted and approved by the local authority. How to find out about TPOs? So, TPOs are registered as a land charge, and therefore whenever a member of the public is purchasing a property, they should be made aware of the TPOs affecting their land through that process. However, if in doubt or if the information is not available to the members of the public via that process, for whatever reason, members of the public can engage with the development management team who can check if their land includes a tree code by a TPO. Moving on to trees in conservation areas, all trees in conservation areas are protected if they are more than 75 millimetres in diameter, measured at 1.5 metres above ground level. It's an offence to work on a tree in a conservation area without giving the council six weeks' written notice. Carrying out works to trees in conservation areas, like TPO applications, applications can be submitted online, via email or in writing, and they, again, do not incur a fee. How do you find out about a tree in a conservation area? Well, in reality, it's similar to the tree preservation order process. There will be information provided as part of a land charge search in terms of whether your property is within a conservation area, and members can also find out if they're, sorry, members of the public can find out if their property is within a conservation area by looking at public access, which is a planning portal online, or reviewing the conservation area maps published on our website. In addition, they can contact the development management team, who'd be more than happy to advise if anyone lives in a conservation area. With regards to the guidance document itself, a high-level framework is set out in the slide before you, which sets that our intention to produce a guidance document which covers these areas, subject to any additional comments members of the committee have to make. And finally, subject to the chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions, members of the committee. And...
Thank you very much for that, Mr. O'Neil. We'll open it up for questions now. Councillor Pearson first, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for that report. It's very interesting. I just want to get very clear that if you live in the conservation area and you've got a tree in your garden and you just want to lop it, you still need permission to do that. Is that correct? I've got a couple of questions, actually.
That's correct. If it met that threshold in terms of size, you would need to get permission by effectively providing a notice via a form to us, and then we'd review it. And as long as we've got no concerns, you're allowed to undertake the required works.
Thank you for that. Because, sorry, Chair, because when a lot of people move into these conservation areas, especially where I live in Hymn, you've got quite a few conservation areas around us, and they move in and they think they can do what they like. When they move into these conservation areas, how do we make them aware that you can't just do what we're trying to talk about now?
So, as the local authority, when somebody purchases a property, we don't send any specific information at ourselves. That's what the land charges process is there for. It will advise of what kind of key constraints apply to a property, and then it's for the owners to do a degree of due diligence themselves. However, we appreciate this can be a kind of complex area to navigate, which is why the intention is, A, to produce this guidance, but there's also the conservation area work the members of the committee have engaged with previously, and that's being progressed. So the intention is to have additional information available on our website, which members of the public can access, which will allow them to see more readily if they're in a conservation area and the type of rules that apply to their property, et cetera.
One more question, Chair, is what age does a tree have to be before it can have a TPO put on it?
There's no hard, fast rule regarding a certain age. It's more about the size of the tree, its impact in the local environment, the amenity it provides that local area, et cetera. Normally, it would have to be well-established, if I can put it that way. You wouldn't necessarily put a TPO over a young tree that's just been planted, like something that we wouldn't, for example, plant in a park. However, if that tree was planted as a result of replacing a tree that was already covered by a tree preservation order, so for example, if somebody had to cut a tree down and they replaced it with another tree, that new tree would be covered by the tree preservation order automatically.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hawkins, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just also come back to the second question. I think it also, it depends on who your solicitor is. So when I purchased my house, the solicitor was brilliant, and they pointed me to all the different guidance that was given by both the council and nationally on tree preservation and conservation areas, but speaking to neighbours who didn't have an equivalent thing, I think I would speak to maybe what Shad was saying, I think we need to be probably the voice for those people that probably didn't get the service that they expected. So I've got a couple of questions as well. My first question, in terms of the, I guess, the cost, acknowledging that it's free to do the planning application, I think this is probably the bit that's surprising to people, that they basically got to pay for an arborist to do a report. And if it's, although obvious that a tree just needs some regular maintenance, a bit of a trim, say, they're probably going to have to spend sort of £150 to £300 for a report. Are there any, I guess, any areas of pruning or trimming that won't need one of those reports produced?
I can't say that there is sitting here, but the reality is we would take them on a case-by-case basis. The LPA does take a pragmatic approach, so we wouldn't always insist on such a report. However, it really does depend on the information being provided. Sometimes the information provided is sufficient for us to actually gauge what works are required and understand why the works are being undertaken, but that's not always the case. Sometimes you can just get a grainy photo of somebody saying, "I just wanted to undertake works to this tree."
Richard, thank you. The other question was around, I guess, the converse of that, because we've had a couple of instances reported, I think we should come through to the horticultural thing, but actually people with tree preservation orders who aren't maintaining their trees and they're overhanging sort of public byways or they're interfering with neighbours. Does the council have an ability to actually force somebody to maintain the tree that has a tree preservation order, all within a conservation area?
Not in terms of maintaining the tree for the sake of the tree. The Section 215 requirements generally in terms of amenity, et cetera, but that's a different piece of legislation that would need to be followed. And there's other powers that, well, between KCC and GPC have in terms of protecting the public right of way, et cetera, which could potentially be engaged.
Thank you. And any other questions at this point? Just, I'm going to follow up on a couple of bits of pieces, because I think that's been very useful. I think, go back in reverse order, I think it'd be wise to put in about Section 215, so though there's a separate piece of legislation, actually, there is an enforcement element to this, and I know some of it's on about what happens if you disobey a TPO, but actually there are some obligations rather than just letting something run wild, actually how to make sure they do that. I think putting the pragmatic approach in that report shows that, I think, is very useful, because, you know, for what could be a couple of hundred quid's worth of pruning, you don't need a two grand report. It seems a bit overzealous in a way to do that, and I think it's about that, I suppose, cost balance ratio. You know, if you're looking for a £100 job, you don't need a £2000 report, but if it is a very extensive piece of work they're doing, then quite rightly there needs to be, but I appreciate the case-by-case basis, but I think we need to give some examples, if possible, but certainly some guidance about saying, "We mean this." If, you know, its annual cutback is very different to taking off the entire top of somewhere. So I think we just need to be sort of laying out as much as we can what we mean and what will require and won't require so that people, I suppose, are clear. The, in this guidance as well, but the emergency thing actually got me in the presentation. It says it's five days of emergency. I'm thinking, it's rare, but when we have lightning strikes and things like that, when we have trees that are knocked over by lorries or things like that, or a crash, actually some of these trees could be a very, very great danger, that five days simply isn't going to cut it, and we don't have five days. That needs to be taken down and now, and while it's sad that it's taken down, if a lorry crashes into a tree and it's overhanging, we need to get that down, and we get it down now, and it might have a TPO on it, but the safety matters. Can I just be assured, I suppose, and certainly in this guidance, that even, you know, an emergency really does mean an emergency, and five days isn't an emergency. John, so answer that one just for the committee, please.
Yeah, so, thank you, Chair. In terms of the emergency that you've outlined, Chair, if it's an immediate emergency, there's provisions within the legislation to allow people to undertake immediate works and then to notify us of the most reasonable opportunity, so to speak, and we can set that out in the guidance.
Are there any other points or questions on this? So the idea is to create some public guidance for this, to put it on websites. I always want to appoint councillor Pearson's point about, I suppose, the proactiveness of TPOs, and I think councillor Hawkins raised a good point, if you've got a good solicitor, they'll let you know, and it should be very good, but let's be honest, now some of them will include it in a massive, great big pack, and you're in the busy moving, trying to move house and deal with everything like that, and it's, oh, by the way, there's a TPO on a tree on your property, isn't, you know, it really is very dependent. So I suppose, is there a proactiveness that's possible, and this is something to take away, is a proactiveness possible to say these are, I suppose, and I would like to widen out, maybe talking to conservation as well, and not just conservation areas, but conservation in general, these are your requirements now you've bought this property, and so people can't, there's no, I suppose, claim of ignorance moving forward, if that makes sense, everyone is fully informed. It requires a bit more proactive work, but how many, how many sort of properties change hands over that? I'll be, can we say to people that move in, I suppose, congratulations on your new property? FYI, in case your solicitor hasn't told you, there are free TPOs on your property, and you're in a conservation area, that means you need X, Y, Z if you want to do X, Y, Z. It's proactive from the council, but also there's no, then, defence of ignorance, "My solicitor didn't tell me," because the council told you. And maybe there's a proactive way of doing it. I'm aware I'm spending budget at this point, but I think it's, but I think it's something about us being proactive as a preventative measure, rather than trying to take people to court for something they can quite rightly say the solicitor didn't tell them, through no fault of their own, but the law is not on their side in this regard, in this way. So it's the same proactive there, based on these points, please.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, cancel bits, and then you can also have to get this, okay?
Sorry. I do think that's a good idea, because that way, there's no excuse that they wasn't told or anything. I mean, people will act on the ignorant side, but I do think that if the council can do more in that respect, and I think that would be a great help, great help.
Thank you, Chair. No worries. All I was going to say is, I've had the point, it's one that, as you quite rightly said, we'll take away, look at and see what we can do and report back.
As, for those who are new to the committee, and there's a couple here that are new, the cycle of bringing reports to the committee, when we're building new strategic directions or guidance documents about, we bring a presentation to the committee for this discussion so that a draft can be presented to a future committee, just to make sure all points are covered and we've got things to do that. So the idea is this will come back to a future committee, this guidance for then that discussion, based on all the comments here, that will be very welcome, that then we have something that we've all then worked on together and then goes out, goes out to the world. So I think if everyone's okay with that, we'll move on, but have that presentation, all those notes have been taken and will be minuted, and we'll bring then a policy back, a guidance document back to the next committee, and should be based on the discussion we've had here tonight. That's okay for everyone to move on to the next item? Yeah? Thank you very much. Item seven then on the agenda is the building, draft building control strategy. So in line with what I've just said, we had a building control presentation last time, and this is stage two of that, of that process next, where we have a building control strategy in draft. So it is appended in the appendix, starts from page three onwards to page 12. Shad, do you want to give us the brief introduction to this, and then we can go through it?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think you've covered most of what I was going to say, but members may recall that at the previous meeting, a presentation was given with regards to building control with a view to utilizing the feedback to inform the production of the strategy document. This is attached to Appendix 1. Separate comments members made in relation to the information available via our website is currently being addressed, and that will be done outside of the meeting, in keeping with the previous approach, and as the Chair has just advised, we can go through the document page by page. I'm happy to take any onboarding comments and addressing queries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So I propose if we just go through the draft strategy page by page, and if there's anything that jumps out, everyone from there, reading the papers they want to say, or place comment on, please do, and we'll take from there. So page three is a forward introduction from me. Amend it as you will. Apart from the photo, I'm afraid there's nothing I can do about that. It was photoshopped to the best of the ability of the Commons Department. Page four then, the introduction. Anything on page four, comments from colleagues? Anything on page five, the colleagues, the vision and the strategic games? No? Thank you very much. Anything on page, on page six? To colleagues? I just want to highlight a couple of parts, I think it's really, really important here for members of the public watching as well, about the design element of this, and we've said this in our planning policy as well that's come out. The council is effectively there as a judging authority with it, although we will be very proactive in helping customers, helping constituents with their queries, it is not there as a planning agent, we're not there to do designs for people, we're not there to ensure that if an agent has designed something quite badly, we're not there to repair it. It's there, you know, we won't validate things that aren't any good. We're there to take a really proactive decision on what is hopefully a full set of documents that we need to, there's an authority to make an informed decision, be it via delegated decisions or by a full planning committee that meets in here. But this also implies a building safety, when things are going through some of the building safety, building regs, you know, the council won't assist with the design of this, because it's, the idea is it's an assessment role on this, but also that it has an enforcement role. So if it is contravened, we have a role of enforcement, because that's what, you know, we need powers and teeth to make sure that if something's not right, we do that. So it's just worth noting there that we're enforcing that. So anyway, anything else on page six? This strategy does not plan to move away from what we've got in terms of STG building control. It's a very, colleagues may know, it's a shared service we have with other local authorities. We share the functions and to sort of put our building control powers into this shared local authority function, it's not a private company, it's a partnership between other authorities, and it's very hard to get building surveyors these days, so that's proved very successful and also cost-effective partnership over the years. So we're proposing strategically towards that direction, it's succeeded in successive administrations now, and we want to make sure that continues. Anything on page seven? Anything on page eight? Anything on page 10? Anything on page 11? Just want to highlight the enforcement policy that is appended, there's a link on there, page 11. We've just talked about a focus on prevention, but we're reserving the right to move to prosecution if needed, it's not an incremental thing. We've had this policy in the council for some time now, that any prosecution should fit the crime, so if it's something very low level, not deemed unsafe, then we'll just stop it, we'll enforce against it. If someone's deliberately tried to cause danger to someone's life, or a sort of foul of or as a sort of fall and foul of building regs deliberately, then we move, we're not, we're not going to just issue a slap on the wrist. It will be straight to prosecution if necessary. So we reserve the right to move to whatever, ever stage we need to, uh, to make sure it's safe and accountable. Uh, and then the last one is page, uh, page 12. Any guys, councillor Larkins, please?
Thank you. Just, just on the action plan at the very end. Um, have we got a date in mind for when the action plan will be drafted and when it will start to be reported to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, the intention is to take onboarding any comments from today and then produce the actual, uh, actual plan for the, um, chair to approve. Um, and then, and like other action plans, the intention would be, um, for it to be reported at least once to the committee. Um, during the course of the year, if not, um, greater depends on what's included within the action plan. Um, so as soon as that's agreed with the chair, it's something that we can share and share on the reporting mechanisms.
Thank you very much. Um, it's worth noting also that the actual business plan of the STG building drop ownership due to the size of the budget actually doesn't come to a cabinet committee because it's, it's quite a lot of money, given the staffing involved. It's reserved to cabinet, it can't be decided at cabinet committee level. Um, and there's features in the budget every year. So even some of it actually goes to full council as well. So it's, it's, it's an important function, but policy wise is decided here. If there were no other comments, the recommendation then is that we consider reporting by the comments, which we've done. Thank you very much. If they're, um, the idea, um, can I amend that then? If there are no other comments to this, we can take this as ratified and I can take this forward for a decision. Um, subject to some minor amendments. That's okay. Thank you very much, Colly. Can we note that? That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Um, that then moves us on to the final substantive item we can move through, which is the corporate business plan quarter four reporting of the last financial year. So I know we're in July already, but this is for January to March 2025. Um, and we're going through it. If, uh, should anyone just introduce, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so this is a for information on the report, which provides an overview, as the chair has said, of the performance on, um, areas that the interest of this committee related to the council's wide performance management, uh, framework. And the focus is on Q4 of the 2024, 2025 financial year. And that covers, um, the months of January, February, March. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I'll go through it page by page if there are any particular comments. Uh, I want to start with one particular comment about, um, about some of the business development element of this portfolio. Bearing in mind it's quite new to this, it's, um, it's right, and we've, we're organising for the business development side of the portfolio to come to the next planning committee and have a sort of more in-depth session with them. Um, so members can be not only familiar with some of the policy things that are up and coming and coming forward, um, but also some of the strategic stuff as well in terms of the corporate performance. So, um, bearing in mind, we don't have any officers here from economic development tonight. Um, very happy to take any questions we may have about our way, but also we'll have a special session if you build with them at the next cabinet committee meeting for, for comment. So with that in mind, then the first page, I believe is then page, uh, officially 16. Page 16, please. Um, that's PI 13, 14. Any comments on that? Uh, moving on to page, oh, sorry, councillor Larkins, apologies.
Um, actually, it's not, not for now, but actually for the next session for officers when they report. Just if it would really help us to know what good looks like. So if it's 6.710, but it should be 50, then brilliant. But if it's supposed to be 6.6, then that's okay. So if we can get some context when the, when the team presents later in the year, that'd be great, please.
I can provide a bit of context today if that helps. Um, so when you take a step back and review the wider data set, um, Gresham has the smallest percentage of employee jobs in the knowledge economy in Kent. Uh, percentage is 6.7, whilst staff is 8% of jobs in the knowledge economy. The highest performing areas in Kent are Tunbridge Wells and Canterbury, which have 21.7, 21.7% and 21.4% respectively. So that's the kind of comparator that, that we've got. And, um, in terms of Kent as a whole, um, Kent as a whole has seen a drop in, um, knowledge economy jobs of the preceding year. So in the sense that our numbers have fallen, that's going to be expected. But, um, in kind of general terms, as is the case with the wider economy, when we compared ourselves to other areas, we're on the weaker side.
Thank you. I think your wider point, councillor Larkins, about understanding the context of what's good and not, I think it's something to take forward. We'll make a note of that, please, colleagues, if we can, um, help draw that out in a report moving forward. I think it's very useful. Um, I, I will just comment on there. We've got the employment land workspace assessment. So this is part of the local plan element. And, uh, we're moving this steadily towards regulation 19, uh, which I know Mr. Garni is having uh, lots of work on at the moment. He smiles, uh, with the glee of the work that he's undertaken for this long arduous process. But it's one that's exceptionally important to the borough and that assessment is one of that, one part of that um, process as we move towards Reg 19. Um, hold on to your hats, people. It's coming. 17, then page 17, uh, skills offer. Uh, this is 15 and 16, um, on MBQ and resident unemployment. Um, resident unemployment has remained quite steady, um, over, over the last, over the last year. Um, and we know there's some, uh, some reports including the industrial strategy that hopefully from government that will come with um, some resource to help, um, drive what is already quite a low number, um, down even further as people move to employment. And then on 17, page 18 then. Yeah, it's 19 and 20. Uh, this is major and minor plan applications. Uh, councillor here, please.
Sorry, um, page 18. Um, so congratulations first for the offices for achieving 100% sort of, uh, um, processing them. So you put there a minor application. Up to what point is an application minor?
So, um, minor applications, main, uh, major applications, they're set by government and they're based on certain thresholds. So for example, residential development, um, anything above 10, um, is a major application. Anything below 10 would be a minor application, just as an example.
Thank you very much. Uh, by Chair councillor here saying is, um, a point about this being 100% record. And I think, uh, I think one of the points made earlier about accepting applications when they're ready helps because actually then officers are, are doing their role in that judgment and supportive to applications, but are, are not sitting there trying to do it sometimes for applications. So working, working in partnership, not doing it for is important. So we're not, as part of the validation, we're not validating until they're ready. And that's, that's really important. But it means then officers are then spending their time in their, in their substantive role. I suppose they're helping people, but they're helping people um, in, in the way they should, uh, which is to assess the application. Um, so given that the average tends to be around sort of 90 and 91% um, at the moment, actually have a 100% in, in successive quarters now is a really good thing. So, um, I'm sure we want to pass on our thanks to, um, to the team for that work. Um, if I move on to then page, uh, 19, uh, which is uh, PI 21 and 22. So this includes planning enforcement actions. Um, Shazad, you want to just comment on planning enforcement for us, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. So, um, as you've quite rightly pointed out, PI 19, PI 20 and PI 21 illustrate then quarter four, the development management service continued a strong performance, um, in terms of their actions with regards to PI 22, um, and planning enforcement. Whilst only a single enforcement actually shown in the table itself, that doesn't truly reflect the actions that are taken by the enforcement, um, enforcement service. As I said out in the text, um, 47 enforcement cases were closed by colleagues during the course of that quarter, bringing the total number of cases successfully close to 48, which is significantly greater than the one um, shown in the table. However, the one is just a formal enforcement action where a notice was issued. Um, 47 other actions that are taken by the council, um, via, via the enforcement service has successfully resulted in the closure of cases. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, it's, um, I just want to say it's worth noting that, um, we are reviewing that PI at the moment with the director because it doesn't accurately reflect the work that is being done. Clearly, the context there shows 47 cases being done through bridges. It doesn't reflect that there's one and then on a chart, context matters, um, but it doesn't accurately reflect the work. So we're looking at that to actually, I suppose, accurately reflect that the high threshold for what makes the pie chart being, uh, almost court case level, uh, enforcement doesn't actually mean that there are a range of powers being used underneath that on a regular basis. So that entire PI is being used and reviewed, um, to make sure that it accurately reports, reports the work that goes on, uh, because that doesn't, as, as, as Mr. Garni just said, doesn't actually report what, what they've done in 47 cases. Been close to that another time. So we want to get that particular PI right, um, um, in, in that way. And we'll hopefully have a review of that in the future. And then we'll feed it all through with all that context to make sure it's accurate because it's not, it doesn't seem like it's reflective of that. And it's a numerical accounting issue, I think, but we can find a proper way forward. Councillor Pearson, you want to do that, thank you, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to ask in the 24, 25 in quarter two, um, the enforcement was actually 12. So that's a great significant height in enforcement. Is that because people are reporting more or is that, uh, uh, how did that come about?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the increase 12 in quarter two of 2024 stroke 25, that doesn't necessarily mean more cases were reported. It just means there were more, um, cases which required a formal enforcement notice to be issued. Um, so it just happened to be a case that a number of cases got resolved during that quarter by a formal enforcement notice rather than any other actions. Um, and given the kind of complex, um, issues that generally arose around that time, that makes sense. So it was more a case of people having undertaken works and, um, then not agreeing to basically revert back to an original position or, um, addressing the situation to what would be acceptable. And therefore, as a local authority, we had no choice but to issue a formal enforcement notice of some kind.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, if there's anything else on the final page, we can move on to the final page of, uh, number 20, uh, which is K, uh, PI 23 and, uh, PI 24. Um, yeah, come on.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to apologize for PI 24 not being before you tonight. It's one that we're, um, currently still collecting the data for. Um, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to report that to yourselves at the next committee. Um, so apologies for that.
Thank you very much. Um, i- if it's ready before the committee, I'm sure the committee will work on it, just being sent out to them rather than wait till September. So if, if, once you have the number, please, um, please send it out. Um, I've always found PI 23, um, to be, um, to be amusing in the way that we, we hold ourselves to account for how many homes have been added to the list. But of course, the, the context actually even says in the document that we're depending on developers to actually do the developing, apart from the ones that we'll be, we're building for residents. Um, um, and I'll say it again and say it again, every opportunity, the charter is for us, is for local residents, 242 build to rent homes. We haven't sold it to Tower Hamlets, to Lewisham or any other London borough, or for that matter, any borough or district or council and anywhere in the United Kingdom or further afield. They are for Gresham residents. Okay. I'll say it again. Um, but although those are the ones we can have, um, they're saying we hold to account for developers bringing things through or not. Um, so, um, I'm looking forward to hopefully the government giving some powers to hold developers to account for. We, we have, how many permissions roughly, Mr. Garni, at the moment? Or we actually have granted for permissions to, to add homes to the borough?
Um, a good few thousand units permitted, around a thousand or so units, um, allocated already. Um, quite a number still to be built.
So that's my very point, colleagues, is we have a good few thousand units already permitted. Um, but that doesn't mean to say that, that they're out and built. So, well, it's good to see that the numbers, um, are there for, for the additional homes. Quarter four being added is, I mean, quarter four is January, February, March. Um, quarter three includes October, November, December. So it's no surprise that every year the quarter two has the big bump because those are the summer months. Um, but, um, overall, I think we need to ensure, we can ensure that, but we need the powers to ensure developers can actually deliver on their promises and their permissions, of which this council has given them, um, especially on brownfield sites. Councillor Pearson, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, you say that these, uh, we're going to hold the developers to account. How do we know that these people, that these houses are for local? Well, I know we're saying they're for local people, but when these as an associations get involved, they don't always go to local people. How are we going to ensure that they go to the local people?
So, so there's three things there. Um, in terms of housing delivery, the current government is currently looking at, um, introducing a degree of forcing developers to provide the local authority with a trajectory when they submit a planning application. Um, and then effectively holding them to account in case that trajectory. And if they don't build it out, there's meant to be some form of punishment mechanism engaged. That's the current, um, thinking within government. Yet to see the detail, but that's the kind of general approach that's being considered. With regards to comments in terms of, um, how we can make sure housing is delivered for locals. So when it's a property for the general market, we don't have any control. It is provided on the general market. And notionally, everyone locally has access to it, but I appreciate costs, et cetera, um, have a role to play. When we have proposals such as, for example, the charter, which is the council's own scheme, um, there's legal mechanisms put in place as part of the section 106, which ensures that the properties are advertised um, and initially provided to locals. Um, so there's those mechanisms built into schemes like that. With regards to RSLs and affordable housing, um, there are section 106 mechanisms that we put into place to ensure that effectively the boroughs, residents and those that are on our waiting list get first dibs, um, before, um, that RSLs are able to offer the properties any wider. So that's the approach that's taken. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you. And it's going to be a really important point moving forward, um, especially with the local plan. I know councillor Pearson, we've had some discussions on this, how we make sure that, um, housing that, that is needed, especially in areas that where there are residents that want to live in the villages they grew up, for example, that, uh, there are mechanisms in there and it's going to be important as we move and have that discussion forward. Um, to make sure that they are not out of reach, um, as I'm sure some developers would like. But, um, but we're all going to be here for our residents. We're going to do our best for them, I'm sure. I know we've had that discussion, councillor Pearson, which I welcome. Uh, if you wish to comment on that.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on that, Chair. It's because, um, as you know, we've had, um, affordable houses built in Hainan on, on several occasions. There's three different developments been going on in Hainan. But the Hainan people that put in for them didn't get them. And that's why I'm asked that question. How can we make sure that our local people get the houses that we're building for them?
Thank you very much. And I think that's, that's something we all need to reflect on, um, as we continue the local plan process. But also, um, and I think we'll all welcome some of those powers from the government if they're coming this way. I think one of the, the worst discoveries in this portfolio is that planning enforcement powers are, are not the same as environmental enforcement powers. There lacks a punishment element if people deviate from, from what was agreed really, other than quite expensive court battles that you're not necessarily able to guarantee any sort of victory out of. And the taxpayer bears the cost, especially if you don't win. Um, and so in some ways, there's not that, uh, not the same way of, of holding to account that I think is, is needed. But I think we're all welcome. If there is the ability to go, if you've promised something um, like this, then we, developers, we hold you to account for it. Um, and you can't segue out of your agreements in this way. Uh, I think it would be really positive moving forward for residents because those are the ones that are going to benefit from, from having those powers as a local authority and whatever the local authority looks like moving forward. Because ultimately, as councillors across party, we're here to serve residents and we'll, we'll do that and represent those views. So thank you for that and for the, for the conversation on that, um, some time ago. Um, that's it for page 20 in the report. Is there anything else anyone wants to say on the report's report? Uh, thank you very much. So it's for noting. So we agree to note, thank you. Um, there's, item nine is any other business, which there is none, no reason to exclude. So that's the end of the meeting. Uh, it's 816. Thank you very much, everybody.